Good afternoon. This is the 35th meeting of the 72nd term of the Baltimore City Council now called Order. If you have your cell phones, please turn them off or put them on vibrate. Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor Alvin Gwen of the Letten Hall Baptist Church. If everyone would please stand for the invocation, remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
As my fourth word of prayer. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion. Allow us to grow closer and help us nurture the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace, Lord God, as we make decisions that affect our citizens and continue to remind us that all that we do here today, all that we accomplish, is for the greater glory of you, for the pursuit of peace and prosperity for our city, and for the service of humanity. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Hey, Carol. Where's Carol? Would you ask the staff to move in the back so that we can get those seats for those next three so I have a busy fit? Just ask the three. I don't care. Ask Matt.
(inaudible)
President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Risinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark. Mr. President, we have a call.
This evening, we welcome Lynn Selby of Baltimore Links. Welcome.
Thank you so much. Good evening. Good afternoon, Council President Young, members of the City Council, and friends in the gallery. The Baltimore, Maryland chapter, the Links Incorporated, really thanks you for hosting us this evening. This is really exciting time for the Baltimore chapter because 2018 represents our 70th year since our chartering in 1948. In the spirit of friendship and service envisioned by our founders, Sarah Strickland Scott and Margaret Roselle Hawkins, we consider ourselves a partner with the city and the city council because we're all committed to enriching, sustaining, and ensuring the cultural and economic survival of the citizens of Maryland, Baltimore. To meet these goals, we perform work around what's called five facets: the arts, health and human services, international trends and services, national trends and services, and services to youth. The chapter has a strong history of collaborations with partners, sponsors, donors, and supporters to develop and implement what we call transformational programming. That's program really designed to impact and change lives. Example of our transformational programming is work we look towards related to supporting the Blueford Jew-Jimison STEM Academy in West Baltimore. If you haven't heard, BDJ is an all-male school of 500 scholars, 6th through 12th grade. It's the only school of its kind in Maryland. Our chapter provides a host of services from seminars on interaction with law enforcement, art appreciation and expression, anti-bullying, voter education and registration, as well as providing interest fees and coaching for several robotics competitions annually. We're super proud of the work that we've done around establishing a chapter of the National Society of Black Engineers Junior, or NSBI Junior, at Blueford Jew-Jimison STEM Academy. We've developed significant relationships and agreements with Morgan State University, School of Engineering and Architecture, that'll allow our students at BDJ to get tutoring and go on campus visits. But our work just isn't here in Baltimore. We've extended this relationship internationally. We've adopted the Claremont School for Homeless in Jacmel, Haiti, and developed a connection between BDJ and the Claremont School that includes STEM education and a partnership on a robotics contest. And we also have the students from Jacmel and the Claremont School in BDJ look at and involve themselves in French language immersion. We're very supportive of our HBCUs, Coppin and Morgan here in Baltimore. We award over $30,000 in GRAS scholarships annually. GRAS is the chapter's program graduate retention and support program, which really helps students that have financial need reduce time to completion by giving them the money they need towards graduation. In addition, we award around $20,000 in scholarships annually to Baltimore City High School graduates headed to HBCUs. We coordinate an annual Be the Match donor registry event at area churches and colleges, and we mentor young women through the GEM Squared Program, which is Girls Empowerment Mission Squared Program. This is just a snapshot of the work that we do here in the city. It's our hope that as we move forward, the city and the city council will look to the Baltimore chapter, the Links Incorporated, as a partner and a resource. Finally, I would be remiss if I didn't add that we are delighted to have as a new member among our ranks, Councilwoman Sharon Green Middleton, and our new members that are also in the audience. I just want to ask all the members of the Baltimore chapter, the Links Incorporated, to stand. Again, thank you for hosting us.
Thank you. This is the custom -- oh, Chair recognizes.
Mr. President, I request, like to request floor privileges.
Second by Councilman Stokes, all in favor of requesting floor privileges for the guests. Vice President Middleton, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Ours have it. Your guests may take the floor.
I would like my guest to take the floor, please, on the -- This working? Yeah, there we go. As you heard, this organization, in fact, they're celebrating, we are celebrating the 70th, this is the 70th year anniversary, and just imagine, for 70 years, this Baltimore City chapter has been doing wonderful things in the city of Baltimore for health-wise, with students, nationally. I mean, they have been setting a mark for Baltimore. And for that, I'd like to present this resolution, this citation to you, beautifully framed citation, and it reads, "The City Council of Baltimore Resolution, be it hereby known to all that the City Council of Baltimore offers its sincerest congratulations to the Baltimore chapter of the Links Incorporated in recognition of your 70 years and your diligent and dedication to implementing programs that impact and transform many communities in Baltimore City. The entire membership extends best wishes on this memorable occasion and offers this resolution be presented on this 14th day of May 2018, signed by the President Bernard C. Jack Young, myself, and all members of the council, and congratulations." And I think we're adding another school that we're going to be representing, and that's Coppin Academy. So thank you for your hard work, and we have lots of work to do, and please support this organization.
Okay, thank you all, and thank you for the work that you do day in and day out. And congratulations to Council Vice President Middleton on being inducted into the Links. All right, thank you. This is the Council, customer generalized the invocation, ask for motion to generalize the prayer. Moved by Councilman Scott, seconded by Councilman, Councilman Ross Singer, all in favor of generalizing the prayer, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Motion is adopted. Approval of the journal.
Mr. President, the Journal of the Proceedings from the May 7th City Council Meeting is on council members' desks.
Most approve the journal. Motion by Scott, Councilman Scott, seconded by Councilman Henry. All in favor of adopting the journal, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion have it, and the journal is adopted. Bill signed by the mayor can be found on page two of the agenda. Bill to be introduced.
City Council Bill 18 dash 0235, supplementary state fund operating appropriation, Health Department, $239,511, for the purpose of providing a supplementary state fund operating appropriation in the amount of $239,511 to the Health Department, Service 720 HIV treatment services, to provide funding to facilitate the integration of Ryan White services within the city and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Budget and Appropriation Committee.
City Council Bill 18 dash 0236, supplementary state fund operating appropriation, Health Department, $465,000, for the purpose of providing a supplementary state fund operating appropriation in the amount of $465,000 to the Health Department, Service 303 Clinical Services, to provide funding for the development of the Sexual Health and Wellness Center that will, that will house Ryan White, STI, and other programs, which provide early intervention services to individuals and families living in Baltimore with, affected by, or at risk of HIV infection, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Budget and Appropriation Committee.
City Council Bill 18 dash 0237, supplementary federal fund operating appropriation, Health Department, $1,059,448, for the purpose of providing a supplementary federal fund operating appropriation in the amount of $1,059,448 to the Health Department, Service 720 HIV Treatment Services, to provide funding for a demonstration project for HIV, STD prevention programs to help implement a systems-wide organizational trauma-informed approach and cultural shift to support client health and well-being, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Budget and Appropriation Committee.
City Council Bill 18 dash 0238, Baltimore City Parking Authority Contracts, for the purpose of modifying the contract expenditure threshold that requires approval of a parking authority contract by the Board of Estimates. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 18 dash 0239, zoning conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R8 zoning district variances, 1613 West Pratt Street, for the purpose of permitting subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R8 zoning district on the property known as 1613 West Pratt Street, Block 0262, Lot 007, as outlined in red on the accompanying plan, and granting variances from certain bulk lot area size and off-street parking requirements. Sponsors, Bullock.
This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
Mayor and City Council Resolution 18 dash 0240, operating budget for the Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2019, for the purpose of approving the budget estimated to be needed for the Baltimore City's Board of School Commissioners for operating programs during fiscal 2019, providing for certification of the approved budget to the state's superintendents of schools, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Budget and Appropriation Committee.
City Council Bill 18 dash 0241, Urban Renewal, Jewett Heights Amendment, for the purpose of amending the urban renewal plan for Jewett Heights to reauthorize the acquisition of properties within the project and to extend the life of the plan, waiving certain contact and procedural requirements, making the provisions of this ordinance severable, providing for the application of this ordinance in conjunction with certain other ordinances, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill 18 dash 0242, Urban Renewal, Broadway East Amendment, for the purpose of amending the urban renewal plan for Broadway East to reauthorize the acquisition of properties within the project area, waiving certain contact and procedural requirements, making the provisions of this ordinance severable, providing for the application of this ordinance in conjunction with certain other ordinances, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill 18 dash 0243, Urban Renewal, Poppleton Amendment, for the purpose of amending the urban renewal plan for Poppleton to reauthorize the acquisition of properties within the project area, waiving certain contact and procedural requirements, making the provisions of this ordinance severable, providing for the application of this ordinance in conjunction with certain other ordinances, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill 18 dash 0244, Urban Renewal, Oliver Amendment, for the purpose of amending the urban renewal plan for Oliver to reauthorize the acquisition of properties within the project area, to extend the life of the plan, and to remove certain properties from the list in Exhibit B, waiving certain contact and procedural requirements, making the provisions of this ordinance severable, providing for the application of this ordinance in conjunction with certain other ordinances, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill 18 dash 0245, Urban Renewal, Park Heights Amendment, for the purpose of amending the urban renewal plan for Park Heights to reauthorize the acquisition of properties within the project area and to remove certain properties from the list in Appendix B, waiving certain contact and procedural requirements, making the provisions of this ordinance severable, providing for the application of this ordinance in conjunction with certain other ordinances, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill 18 dash 0246, Urban Renewal, Coldstream Homestead-Montebello Amendment, for the purpose of amending the urban renewal plan for Coldstream Homestead-Montebello to reauthorize the acquisition of properties within the project area, waiving certain contact and procedural requirements, making the provisions of this ordinance severable, providing for the application of this ordinance in conjunction with certain other ordinances, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill 18 dash 0247, Urban Renewal, Johnston Square Amendment, for the purpose of amending the urban renewal plan for Johnston Square to reauthorize the acquisition of properties within the project area, to extend the life of the plan, and to remove certain properties from the lists in Appendixes A and B, waiving certain contact and procedural requirements, making the provisions of this ordinance severable, providing for the application of this ordinance in conjunction with certain other ordinances, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill 18 dash 0248, Urban Renewal, Middle East Amendment, for the purpose of amending the urban renewal plan for Middle East to reauthorize the acquisition of properties within the project area, to extend the life of the plan, and to remove certain properties from the list in Appendixes A and D, waiving certain contact and procedural requirements, making the provisions of this ordinance severable, providing for the application of this ordinance in conjunction with certain other ordinances, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee. Resolutions introduced.
City Council Resolution 18 dash 0085R, Dump the Stump, for the purpose of calling on the mayor's office and the Department of Recreation and Parks, Forestry Division to develop a plan to automatically remove all tree stumps in a timely manner after trees are cut down or fall down and replant trees in their place where necessary. Sponsors, Schleifer, President Young, Henry, Scott, Burnett, Bullock, Cohen, Middleton, Clark, Risinger.
Please note that Councilman Dorsey co-sponsor, Councilman Pinkett, Councilman Stokes, Chair recognizes, Councilman Schleifer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to give you my stump speech about Dump the Stump. Dump the Stump is about the environment and public safety. So first off, with the environment, as we've all experienced around Baltimore City, we have eyesores that end up being, end up being a hub for termites and all other things in these stumps that are in front of people's homes and all across the city. Secondly, it's a public safety issue with many people, including, I think Dana almost tripped over this when she came up, people across the city are tripping over these tree stumps. And so that poses a big financial problem for the city, as well as a public safety problem for our citizens. In the past two years alone, we have paid out two separate high-dollar lawsuits. One was about $160,000, one was about $150,000, dealing with tree stumps and the roots and injuries caused by that. The Baltimore Tree Trust and Tree Baltimore have worked hard in this space, and they've worked on inventorying tree stumps all across the city, and they currently have an inventory of 3,000 tree stumps. We could have removed all 3,000 of those tree stumps instead of paying out those two lawsuits. And so besides those two lawsuits, we of course also have a lot of small-dollar lawsuits between $5,000 and $20,000. And so I say if we're proactive, we'll not only save a lot of people from getting hurt, we'll also save the city a lot of money. So on that note, I would like to suspend the rules for immediate adoption.
Second by Councilman Dorsey, all those in favor of suspended rules for immediate adoption of this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The most encouraged, rules are suspended. Chair recognizes, Councilman Schleifer.
I'd like to move the resolution forward.
Second by Councilman Dorsey, all in favor of adopting Resolution 18 dash 0085R, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The most encouraged, this resolution is adopted. That's a nice looking stump.
Yes, sir.
Do they all, do they all look like that?
What's that?
That's a nice looking stump.
No, no, this is a fresh one.
We'd probably get them to our nurseries so the little kids can sit on.
Yeah, this is a fresh one, but I'm thinking maybe we could all, you know, we could all sign it, we'll put it in your office.
They're real nice, you know. If y'all all want to sign it and put it in my office, that's fine, as long as you pay for it. Okay, I'm quite sure Wrexham Parks, I heard that, and earlier today, I said at our council luncheon, that some of the excuses I get from Wrexham Parks is that the stump grinders are, you know, not functioning or in the repair shop. So we want to encourage the administration to spend a little extra money to get so, some of those stump grinders, so that when they tear the tree down, they can take the stump and everything all in one visit, because we see them all over the city. So thank you for the resolution. All right.
City Council Resolution 18 dash 0086R, Improving Development of a Baltimore City Recycling and Solid Waste Management Master Plan, for the purpose of supporting Baltimore City's local team of zero-waste experts and environmentalists, and calling upon the Northeast Maryland Waste Disposal Authority and the city's representatives to that authority to honor the Baltimore City Council's express commitment to waste, zero-waste policies by reissuing its recent request for proposals, RFP, to allow responses from a nationwide universe of experienced zero-waste consultants, and calling on the authority to adopt RFP amendments reflecting the city's zero-waste goals and the urgency of progress through this master plan process. Sponsors, Clark, Risinger, Henry, Schleifer, Scott, Dorsey, President Young, Bullock, Burnett, Cohen, Middleton, Stokes, Sneed.
Chair recognizes, Councilwoman Clark.
Thank you. Mr. President, members of the council, I'd like to recycle that stump right over here for short council members.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman Clark, can you hold up for one minute? Please note that Councilman Pinkett is a co-sponsor.
Oh, thank you, thank you. This is a resolution that reflects, really, this council's commitment to zero-waste. And the advocates who stepped forward and said that if we're letting out a contract for a 30-year plan about recycling and solid waste, we should be sure to mention this council's consistent emphasis on a zero-waste plan for Baltimore City, one in which incineration becomes a thing of the past in not the distant future. And so this is a blend of the, the request for proposal that is out and the new council that is in, and working together to put together zero-waste with a plan that's going forward. And that is the purpose of this resolution, to bring those two extremes together and to make it the, the future of Baltimore City. So, Mr. President, if I may, I'd like to suspend the rules to permit immediate adoption.
Second by Councilman Ross Singer, all in favor of suspended rules for immediate adoption of this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The most encouraged, rules suspended. Chair recognizes, Councilwoman Clark.
Move the resolution.
Second by Councilman Ross Singer, all in favor of adopting Resolution 18 dash 00086R, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The most encouraged, this resolution is adopted.
Thank you.
City Council Resolution 18 dash 0087R, informational hearing, evening and weekend high school apprenticeship programs, for the purpose of requesting that representatives from Baltimore City Public Schools and the mayor's office of employment development appear before the city council to discuss evening and weekend apprenticeship programs at Carver Vocational Technical High and Mergon Olive Vocational Technical Senior High School. Sponsors, Stokes, President Young, Henry, Scott, Bullock, Middleton, Burnett, Clark, Risinger.
Please note, Councilman Pinkett is a co-sponsor. Chair recognizes, Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a lot of anchors here in Baltimore, and Carver and Mervo is one of them, and we talking about providing path, a pathway for our young people. And to me, it doesn't make sense that a school like Mervo and Carver closes at 3:30 and on the weekends they close. So the idea of the hearing was to call in the school CEO and the mayor's office of employment development to find out how we can find funding through the state, through our friends in the General Assembly, to make sure that on the evenings and weekends, that's, those schools will be over in the summertime, so our young people have a career. And if people have a career change, they don't have to be young people, then they have an opportunity to math, be able to go to Mervo or Carver in the evenings, so, thank you.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Education and Youth Committee. You can find the consent calendar in Section A at the back of your agenda, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? Motion by Councilman Pinkett, second by Councilman Costello. All in favor of approving the consent calendar, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The most encouraged, this calendar is approved. Chair recognizes, Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to extend floor privileges to my special guests, the scholars of the Emerson Westside High School Data Analytics Club.
Second by Councilwoman, Council Vice President Middleton, all in favor of extending floor privileges to the Emerson Westside High School Data Analytic Club, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The most encouraged, your guests may take the floor.
So earlier in the year, these amazing scholars from the Emerson Westside Data Analytics Club were successful in getting Marvin Webster posthumously inducted into the National College Basketball Hall of Fame. They partnered with MIT, with the Washington Wizards, Morgan State University as well, in basically building the case using statistics, data, data analysis, to make the case for his success and the work that he's been doing. And, and I thought it was really important that we highlight this amazing work at one of the best high schools in Baltimore City, the mighty Emerson Westside Red Storm. So I wanted to bring forth our scholars, give them resolutions, and also wanted to, Coach, you want to say a few things about the project and the program? Put you on the spot? All right, we have Coach Corey Johnson.
Good evening. These young men worked really hard. We, they were all football players. I'm the head football coach at Emerson, and we were tasked with Robert Clayton, and he contacted my principal, Carl Perry. And since Marvin Webster was an alum of Emerson, thought it would be really good to involve our students in something like this. And this is a club that we're going to carry forward. Next year, we have some things that we want to do with our own analytics, with our own sports teams, and everything like that. And then it's been following athletics and things like that. Analytics is playing a big part, a much bigger role in what's going on with sports teams and everything like that. So this gives our kids a different option, a different perspective on math, and they really took to it, got into the research, and learned something about an alum that they didn't know about, or they didn't know anything about Marvin Webster and the impact that he had, not only at Emerson, but at Morgan State, and then in his career, you know, professionally. So it was a very task, and it was, it was rewarding to see that the effort that we put in came to fruition, and he was elected to Hall of Fame. So I was very proud of these young men. A couple of them will be graduating, going to college. This young man next to me is going to be playing football at Frostburg State University. So, you know, we're very happy about what went on, and hopefully we'll get a lot more members and some female members. Next year, we're going to make sure that we incorporate our female staff as, students as well into our group.
Awesome. Applause. All right, so we have resolutions that we, we actually have been joined by Ms. Katrina Armwood from the Emerson Alumni Association and Emerson Legacy Experience. Thank you for joining us. The City Council of Baltimore Resolution, be it hereby known to all that the City Council of Baltimore offers its sincerest congratulations to the whole team. Each of you guys are going to get one now. For your leadership, as, oh, this is for Coach Johnson, for your leadership. For your leadership as, oh, this is for Coach Johnson, for your leadership as club advisor in the Emerson Westside High School Data Analytics Team, great work getting Marvin Webster inducted to the National Collegiate Basketball Hall of Fame. The entire membership extends its best wishes on this memorial, memorable occasion and directs this resolution to be presented on this 14th day of May, 2018. Signed, President Bernard Young, myself, Councilman Burnett, and the entire members, membership of the city council. Congratulations. So we have Kevin Martin. Here we go, brother. Adrian Lindsay. There you go. Jermaine Lee. Thank you, Councilwoman. Damonta Johns. He's not here today? Okay, I knew we were missing a couple. Wayne Galloway. Not here. Tyron Davis. Not here. See? You don't get the floor privileges, you can't make it. Darius Coles. All right, here you go, brother. Darian Carroll Johnson. Jerome Butler. That's it? Okay. And Mr. Clayton couldn't be here today, but we're going to make sure he gets his as well. Can we get a photo? All right. Cool. Thank you.
Councilman Burnett, I want to thank you for recognizing these outstanding young men. Want to commend you, Coach, and your staff on having them to research Marvin Webster because he was a great basketball player, not only at Morgan, but in the NBA as well. And Emerson, you're catching up a little bit with Dunbar. Y'all have some, I think y'all have a pro in the NFL now?
Okay.
Yeah, a couple of them in the NFL. So keep up the good work and stay positive, okay? Stay engaged in positive programs, listen to the coach, and I guarantee you won't go wrong. So again, thank you, guys. All right. Well, now move the bills on a second reader. I do? I have another one? I skipped him because he was stumping the stump. Chair recognizes Councilman Schleifer.
Mr. President, I'd like to extend floor privileges to my guests from Baltimore Tree Trust, trying to trip me up. And also, if anybody's here from Tree Baltimore.
Okay, okay. I was going to give it to Dorsey. Second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor of extending floor privileges to the guests of Councilman Schleifer, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The most encouraged, your guests may take the floor. They can't take that stump.
So we have a guest here from the Baltimore Tree Trust and I'm here recognizing tonight in the spirit of our resolution, but also thanking them for the great work that they do out in the communities. They work with Tree Baltimore, which is Divisional Wreck and Parks, dealing with all issues relating to the environment. And they have some pretty impressive stats with how many trees they've planted. They've planted 5,700 trees so far and they're going to continue to do more. And they are also maintaining these trees. And so it's quite impressive how many of the trees that they planted stay alive and continue to grow, which is very important for us to not only do it, but to do it right. And they certainly are doing it right. So I wanted to recognize them and I'll present them with a quick resolution. Be it hereby known to all that the City Council of Baltimore offers its sincerest congratulations to the Baltimore Tree Trust in recognition of helping Baltimore City become a healthier and greener place to live. Thank you for the over 5,700 trees you've planted and continue to plant and maintain. The entire membership extends its best wishes on this memorable occasion and directs this resolution to be presented. Council President Bernard C. Jack Young and all members.
Thank you. And we want to thank Tree Baltimore for all of the good things that they do. I was with Tree Baltimore when they did, "We unpack a school." So if any of you really want to get out and help Tree Baltimore, they have opportunities for all of us to come out and help them plant those trees. So again, thank you for the great work you do because those trees help keep the air fresh and they keep the shade in the summertime. So again, thank you, guys, for all that you do. We'll now move the bills on a second reader.
EA 18-0146, Ava's Ransom Members-
I'm sorry. Executive Appointments Committee.
EA 18-0146, Ava's Ransom Member Sustainability Commission District III.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
The committee held a hearing on May the 9th, 2018. I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Dorsey. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye. Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed. Budget and Appropriation Committee.
City Council Resolution 18-0082R, Investigative Hearing Baltimore City Public Schools Enrollment Task Force. For the purpose of calling on representatives from Baltimore City Public Schools to appear before the city council to discuss the goals and membership of their enrollment task force and how the task force fits into a broader effort to engage the community to reverse declining enrollment in our school system.
Chair recognizes Councilman- Oh, you recessed. You recessed it, I'm sorry. Okay. All right, well, there's one here. Judiciary and Legislative Investigations.
City Council Bill 18-0196, Environmental Citations Default Penalty. For the purpose of modifying the procedures for and maximum amounts of the default penalty imposed under an environmental citation on a person cited who neither pays the citations prescribe prepayable fine nor requests a hearing on the violation cited or who, having requested a hearing, fails to appear at the designated hearing correcting and clarifying and conforming related language and generally related to the enforcement of environmental citations.
Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorably.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The most in favor of this bill moves to third reader. Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 17-0119, RPP Area 9, Federal Hill, exception for 819 and 821 Light Street. For the purpose of admitting the park, the parking and management plan for RPP Area 9 to add an exception to the plan's general permit allotments for dwelling units.
Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger.
Mr. President, I move the bill favorable.
Second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The most in favor of this bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill 18-0181, Zoning Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Two Dwelling Units in the R8 Zoning District, 824 North Carrollton Avenue. For the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R8 zoning district on the property known as 824 North Carrollton Avenue, Block 0090, Lot 009, as outlined in red on the accompanying plat.
Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger.
Mr. President, I move the finding of facts.
Second by Councilman Bullock. All those in favor of approving the finding of facts, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The most in favor of the finding of facts are adopted. Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger.
This bill has amendments, so on my colleague's desk, I move the amendments.
Second by Councilman Bullock. All those in favor of approving these amendments, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The most in favor of the bill is amended. Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger.
Mr. President, I move the bill favorable as amended.
Second by Councilman Bullock. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The most in favor of this bill moves to third reader. Silence means yes. Third reader for final passage. I asked him to recess there. I don't think it came out. All right, we're going to go back to Budget and Appropriation Committee.
City Council Resolution 18-0082R, Investigative Hearing Baltimore City Public Schools Enrollment Task Force. For the purpose of calling on representatives from Baltimore City Public Schools to appear before the city council to discuss the goals and membership of their enrollment task force and how the task force fits into a broader effort to engage the community to reverse declining enrollment in our school system.
Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the resolution favorably.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of approving this resolution, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The most in favor of this resolution is adopted. Judiciary and Legislative Investigation. Oh, we did that. Land, we did that. Third reader for final passage.
City Council Bill 17-0091, Zoning Conditional Use Parking Lot, 1904 Wilmington Avenue. For the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the establishment, maintenance, and operation of a parking lot on the property known as 1904 Wilmington Avenue, as outlined in red on the accompanying plat. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 17-0093, Zoning Appeals to Zoning Board Corrective. For the purpose of deleting certain court-imposed statutory provisions since rendered inoperative by Chapter 596, Acts of 2017, which direct persons agree by land use decisions of the planning commission among certain other authorized administrative officers or units, to appeal those decisions to the Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals rather than seeking their judicial review, conforming the new zoning code to decades of city practice and procedures that recognize the final administrative status of planning commission decisions and providing for a special effective date. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved. Committee announcement. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will hold a hearing on Wednesday, June 13th at 4:45 PM. Bill 18-0200, City Property Renaming Radaki Park to Ralph Searsfield at Radaki Park at the request of Councilman Scott. This is being rescheduled from May 16th. Mr. President, I move to suspend rules 10-2 and 10-3 to announce a hearing.
Second by Councilman Stokes. All those in favor of suspending rules, announce a hearing, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The most encouraged, Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Budget Appropriations Committee will hold a hearing on Thursday, May 17th at 12:45 PM on Council Bill 18-0235. This is supplementary state fund operating appropriation Health Department in the amount of $239,000, or $239,511. Mr. President, I move to suspend rules 10-2 and 10-3 to announce a hearing.
Second by Councilman Bullock. All those in favor of suspending the rules, announce a hearing, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The most encouraged, Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Budget Appropriations Committee will hold a hearing on Thursday, May 17th at 12:46 PM. This is on City Council Bill 18-0236, Supplementary State Fund Operating Appropriations Health Department in the amount of $465,000. Mr. President, I move to suspend rules 10-2 and 10-3 to announce a hearing.
Second by Councilwoman Snead. All those in favor of suspending rules, announce a hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The most encouraged, Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Budget Appropriations Committee will hold a hearing on Bill 18-0237 on Thursday, May 17th at 12:47 PM. That's supplementary federal fund operating appropriation for the Health Department in the amount of $1,059,448. Mr. President, I move to suspend rules 10-2 and 10-3 to announce a hearing.
Second by Councilman Pinkett. All those in favor of suspending rules, announce a hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The most encouraged, Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Budget Appropriations Committee will hold hearings on Mayor and City Council Resolution 18-0240, Operating Budget for the Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2019. First on Thursday, May 17th at 2:00 PM and second on Thursday, May 31st at 6:30 PM. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Committee announcements. Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger.
Mr. President, I move to suspend rules 10-2 to announce a hearing.
Second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor of suspending rules, announce a hearing, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The most encouraged, Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger.
The Land Use and Transportation Committee will hold a hearing on Bill 18-0231 on May 23rd at 1:05 PM in the council chambers. This is a RPP Area 24 for a planned amendment. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Committee announcements. Committee announcement. Regular announcement to Councilwoman Middleton, we want to ask for a moment of silence for Baltimore County Executive Kevin Kamenetz, who suddenly passed away a couple of days ago. We, most of us attended his funeral and we want to offer a moment of silence and his remembrance. Chair recognizes Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, also ask that Council Vice President Middleton offer a moment of silence for the 103 homicide victims in Baltimore City in the year 2018 and also all of those that they, we have lost to the continuing opioid epidemic in our city. But on a lighter note, I would like to say that this weekend, of course, was another ceasefire weekend in Baltimore and just thank everyone who did participate in any event throughout the city of Baltimore. I know that myself, Councilman Burnett, and Councilman Dorsey all were dunked in a dunking tank at Community Mediations Ceasefire Block Party. I was first, so the water was clean for me, not the same for those two. But just to show, it just showed again with no homicide this weekend, what everyone can do in the city when they put themselves together, so. Thanks again to all the organizers.
Thank you, Councilman. Also, Councilwoman Middleton, there was a 13-year-old who passed away in her sleep, sky brown. So we can offer a moment of silence for her as well. I think she attended Tenskillman School. Yeah. Chair recognizes Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. Word to the wise, don't ever be the 12th person in a dunk tank. It's disgusting. I was asked to make an announcement this evening by some folks from Chesapeake Climate Action Network and Clean Water Action about an art exhibition that opens tomorrow titled "Wonders of the Wind." This is, it opens tomorrow and runs through May 20th at Seventh Metro Church at 1916 St. Paul Street and there's a closing reception on Saturday, 19th at 5:00 PM. This is a traveling art exhibition. This is an exhibition traveling from Ocean City. It's all around wind energy and clean energy. It's traveling from Ocean City where it closed over the weekend, where wind turbines are slated to be installed offshore. It's coming here to Baltimore where these wind turbines are to be manufactured and it's highlighting the beauty of wind power and the clean energy future in Maryland. Just quickly, a couple of things I've announced in the past. This is the final weekend for a really fantastic play called "Follow No Strangers to the Fun Places" from Acme Corporation Theater on St. Paul Street. And opening before our next council meeting on May 24th, on May 24th is the opening of Life or Theater at the Baltimore Annex Theater. And for third district residents, third district artists, this is the last week to apply for grants through artistdistrict.org. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Zeke Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. President. This last week, I had the pleasure of meeting the 2018 Baltimore City Public School Teacher of the Year, Ms. Laquisha Hall. Phenomenal educator who has devoted the last 16 years to teaching in Baltimore, really an inspiring person. And she spoke a lot about the need for self-care and it just resonated with me, given the recent tragedy that befell County Executive Kamenetz, just the need for us all to take good care of ourselves and you as well, Mr. President. I know you've been running lately, but you know, just the importance as we're doing the public service to also be attuned that we are not immortal and we should take care of ourselves. Thank you.
I'm paying for it, too. Announcements. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Clark.
Mr. President, members of the council, I would also like to mention Jim Dilts, who I believe that the vice president has on her list for a prayer in remembrance. He was a very dear friend of our family and he adopted Baltimore City many, many years ago and then made sure that our legacy is strong. He's a writer, an architect, just a person that cared a lot about the city that had adopted him, that he had adopted. Right across the street here, catty-cornered from us, is the old, the original city hall. We grew up calling it the Peel Museum, but now it's the Peel Center. And Jim Dilts was the leading light for preserving that building and renovating it and now having it as a art space for the community, for this community of Baltimore. So I hope that we can remember him and thank him for all his contributions every time we look across the street and see that this building is alive and well with its doors open. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Vice President Middleton.
Before I announce the next council meeting-
Before I announce the next council meeting, I do want to do two shout-outs for the Maryland Division of Aging. They had their annual senitarian celebration that they have every year at Martins West, and that's for people that have made it to 100 years old or more. There happened to have been someone that was 111 years old. They say that there's over 1,000 senitarians in the state of Maryland, so if, in Baltimore City, if you know anyone that have reached 100 years or more, have them notify the Health Department so they can be a part of this annual celebration that they have every year. And it's sponsored by many people, like Social Security, AARP, there's several sponsors, and it is a wonderful event celebrating people 100 years old or more. And then also, a shout-out to the Silburn Arboreum is celebrating their 50 years of Market Day, that was Fri, event that they have every May, Friday and Saturday, to get your spring flowers. And as you know, the arboreum is where they make all the flowers for our parks and so on throughout the city. So, please support the arboreum. The next meeting of the City Council will be held on Monday, June 4, 2018, and may we have a moment of silence for Jim Dilts, Baltimore County Executive Kevin Kamenetz, Sky Brown. And we now have 101 deaths in Baltimore City. Please have a moment of silence for those families, and also all the families that continue to suffer from the opioid epidemic in this city.
Thank you, Libinoff, for the business. This concludes the-